Okay. Thank you for coming tonight. So, well, we're gonna start with a regular select board meeting, hopefully half hour or less, and then we will roll into the combined select board budget committee meeting. So for right now, I will call the select board meeting to order here on January tenth, twenty twenty-three. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. Flag in the back corner.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Four, four board members present. We have one excused. Todd Boya is excused. Any amendments to the agenda? Nope. Okay. Public comment, and I believe if somebody is here for public comment, we're gonna use the chair next to Alan. Is that right? And they can use that microphone. So if you do have public comment, that would be the place to go. Seeing none, we'll move on. All right. John, the planning board chair is here to give us an overview of work they've been doing on the, our options for the affordable housing warrant article.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and my name is John Talbot with the planning board. Actually, there's three articles, kind of refresh everybody's memory, three issues, I guess, that we've been working on. One was of the affordable housing in relation to the state law that takes effect on the first of July. The other was resource protection, which is, you all remember, came up at the town meeting last year and was voted down. And then the third one is simply to change language in the land use ordinance to say that all, the acceptance of all private roads must be approved at a town meeting. And just to kind of clear up any confusion that might have been there. Some of it they passed out to the select board members, and there's probably one or two more copies, but we'll put this information package on the website in the next day or two. But it kind of, this explains why or our reasoning behind the decisions the planning board made as recommendations to go as the article. So the process has been, we've had, the planning board had a public meeting in October on affordable housing. The conservation commission had a public meeting, yeah, public meeting, not a public hearing, in December on the resource protection. And out of that, we got lots of good information from folks. We've been talked at the town election, did a whole bunch of stuff to get the word out. We had a survey on resource protection, excuse me, affordable housing, and we got some good feedback from folks. So what's in the packet that folks will get to see here over the next few days is our recommendations on those three things. And so as you look at the package on resource protection, and we decided that we, our goal was to follow the comp plan as closely as possible. And so we have two options, two articles that go before the board. One is to take into account all of the resource protection issues that the conservation commission and the comprehensive plan recommends we follow. And so that would take a lot of land out of resource protection, put new land that shouldn't be there because there's no reason it should be. And then it also puts in land on one of six criteria. And if you, as you look at those maps, you'll see there's a map showing as it exists today. And then the second map is what happens when you, you add the new, take out the stuff that shouldn't be there. If that fails, there's an article, one B, for lack of a better term, that says this is the land that should come out of resource protection because there's no reason for that to be there. And then moving on to affordable housing, we have the same two, an A and a B. One is based on the comp plan, what we think the, the affordable, and affordable housing is a bad term. It gives everybody the connotation that, oh, my God, it's gonna be government-supported and all those issues that may or may not go with it. That's not the case. This is just an opportunity to look at how you put additional dwelling units on our existing property. And this is a state law that goes into effect the first of July, whether we like it or not. And what the planning board worked on was what's the best way to implement that based upon the comprehensive land use plan? And then, so there's two options. One is that really kind of follows the comp plan as best we can. The other one is basically, this is what the state law says. And, you know, doesn't really give a lot of options that way. So option one passes, it's the comp plan. Option two passes, it just follows the state law, I guess fairly verbatim. And the third and the last article for your review is changing the terminology to say that all roads, private roads must be accepted by the town meeting. So these will go before the town meeting on the first of April, I believe it is. And so the information is out there for people to look at. And we just wanted to introduce it this evening. So thank you for the opportunity to take a couple of minutes. And I know we got budgets and other things.
Yeah, so any questions or comments from board members?
I have a question. When you said the-
Excuse me, Mark, that's, sorry, that's, it's an out of, out of order. Only the board is speaking, this is what I have in public comments.
Oh, okay.
You can ask them to the side afterwards.
I will.
So.
I wanna get out of here.
It won't be that bad.
Board members, any, any comments, questions? You mentioned a public hearing. Is that, do you have a date for that yet?
Each of the articles has to, requires a public hearing, an official one, that has to occur no more than thirty days before the town meeting. So we'll schedule those at our next meeting on the first of February to occur sometime in early, early March.
Okay, great. All right. Thank you. So, yeah, Joe.
Was there any extra handout?
Yeah, it's just enough for the council.
John, what, on the, on the one A, the added areas, the map, what color is the added areas on this map? Is it the gray?
Green.
Gray is the- Uh, the green is the added.
Okay.
All right. Good?
All right, thank you.
Yep. All right. Town manager report?
Yeah, thank you. So first, I'll update you on the Aqua funds and the computers that we have purchased. So there's been eight in total that have been installed at the town office, public works, and the fire department. So town office got two counter computers. I got a new laptop, the town manager. Code's got a new computer. IT got one. And, and the clerk got a computer. They're all in, they're all working fine, everything's, everything's good. We did have a glitch, though, after they got put in, we couldn't print registrations. So that was a snafu for about five hours where we couldn't fix it, but we got it resolved after that. What happens when you install new, new computers. They just got done doing fire and they just did Calvin's over in public works. Couple people are getting hand-me-downs, John Faith and Diane Dimmack is getting some hand-me-downs that they'll use from here on out. We have one more computer to replace, and that's going to be in planning. We're gonna replace George. George is using his personal computer, which is a no-no. So we're gonna order him a laptop that can drive his GIS system and that sort of stuff. And we've worked with Devin and we'll get that ordered soon and get him up and running so he's on a, on a town computer. So that's that. I don't have the total breakdown yet because I'm just gonna wait till it's done before I report out where we stand with that committed amount. And then I'll update you when, when I get the total numbers.
Okay.
Another thing that's important, the deputy treasurer's seat is now vacant. I'm looking to fill that position. Looking at job descriptions now where I can kind of look at more of what that position is designed to do, which is, there's an accounting piece to that. And I'm also looking at maybe, just looking into maybe contracting that out because it does get difficult if you don't have some accounting experience. I think you all know that our audit report isn't the most shining example of accounting. So I'm gonna look into that and I'll report back once I, once I get my head around all that and get that going. But I'd look to fill it as soon as possible. Trash. So our contract for, is up June thirtieth. I'm meeting with Casella tomorrow. I have the RFP ready to go. When I called them up, they wanted to talk about the contract. And I'm like, sure, come on in and talk. And so I'll find out more about what they wanna talk about. But it is up. The contract that we had was pre-pandemic. So I'm a little concerned about what they wanna talk about and where the cost of that might be going. And I'll update the board on, once I, once I hear from them, the contract will go up to bid. And right now, I'm planning on mailing it to Triano, Casella, Waste Management, and Riverside. Plus, it'll go on our website and it'll go on MMA website. So I'm gonna give it till the end of January. I'm hoping that's enough time. I mean, part of that contract, is anybody bidding on that, has to get familiar with the town. And there's a lot of stip, you know, stipulations in there that they're gonna have to meet before they bid. And they may wanna come in and talk, other bidders. And if they do, then we'll entertain that and, and go on that. Yet to be known what, what they wanna talk about. I, I have a feeling what it is. I, I think they're looking at five-year contracts now. They're looking at changing their, the way they collect the trash. They wanna pick the trash up on the side, use the machine to dump it. But I don't know. We'll see, we'll see where that goes. And I'll keep the, the board updated on that when, when we find out. The meeting's tomorrow at one. So other than that, that's all I really have for the last two weeks that has gone on in the town office.
Okay. Any questions for Jerry in the board? Nope. Okay. All right. I would entertain a motion on the, to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
So moved by Josh. Is there a second?
Sure.
All right, Rich, seconds. All in favor?
I'm staying because I wasn't here.
Okay, yep. Did you have your hands? Yeah, okay, so we have three zero, approved with one abstention because he wasn't here. All right. So now we move into two thousand, well, let me know upcoming meetings, first of all. The select board and budget committee will meet again, this says six o'clock. Is it six or sixteen?
Yeah, we're gonna meet at six.
It is six, okay.
We're gonna keep it consistent, yeah.
Okay, yep. So six o'clock on Thursday, again, here at the Eureka Center for part two of the budget presentation. And then the next regular select board meeting is January twenty-fourth at six-thirty back at the town office. And I would also, I wanna take, in terms of upcoming meetings and notes, I wanna sneak in here that there are only about twenty days left for people to take out nomination papers if they are interested in running for town office. There's, and there's a lot of need this year. There's an open, our school board seat, and the incumbent is not running for reelection. There are two open select board seats, myself and Todd Boya, and neither one of us are running for reelection. And there are actually four budget committee seats. Three regular three-year terms and one, one-year term to finish the term of someone that had resigned before their term was over. So you only need twenty-five signatures to get on the ballot. And believe me, it is a, it, it's a pretty heavy burden on the town office staff if everything is done as write-in. So the more people that actually get their name on the ballot, it's, it's a much smoother process for the, for the town office staff than if they have to manually tabulate, you know, write-ins for everything. So, and those are due, nomination papers will be due back at the town office by close of business on Monday, January thirtieth. Okay. So now we are on to number eight budget presentations. Milt, do you need to take a minute to call the order and do your elections, or?
No, we, but we, our meeting was slated for six-thirty, and we have two members who-
Okay, we can take a recess until six-thirty.
Yeah, please.
Okay? Without objection? Back to order, please. So now we are in session, and I guess you would call this a workshop, with the budget committee joining us tonight. And we're going to have Jerry Douglas, the town manager, start the process of presenting the twenty-twenty-three budget. Milt, did you have anything you needed to call out or mention before we turn it over to Jerry?
I don't. Any, any members, any questions?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah, that'll come, I'm sure.
Well-oiled machine over here.
Do any of the budget committee members want a printout of the email supplement that?
Yes.
So just take one and pass it down? I didn't print one for everybody because I know some people are gonna use laptops. Did you want one? You can share. Actually, I'll pass it because I can't.
Okay, Jerry, I'm gonna turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Budget Committee, and thank you for your service and for, to the community and sitting on the committee and doing your, your civic duty. Before I get into the budget, I just wanna say, you know, I'm four months into this thing. I've done a lot of looking at it. It's a little different than what I'm used to and what I'm used to seeing. I started on August twenty-second. If you're asking me any questions prior to that date, I'm probably gonna tell you I don't know. And there's a lot of things about this budget I'm still trying to figure out, why it is the way it is, why it was labeled the way it was. So we'll move forward with that. And what I'll do is I'll present everything but the fire and the public works tonight. The fire chief is here, he'll do his portion when I get done. Public works will be in on Thursday along with Paul First to talk about the capital stuff. That's how we'll go. So we can just start, we'll just start right in with the, the biggest thing that probably shocked you was the administration part of it. We'll go down through this. And also, too, I'm just gonna get this right out of the way right now. Everything that you see in here is the way I currently understand it. And there is absolutely no raises anywhere. I didn't even do a raise pool. We can talk about that at a later time because I'm still trying to figure out how the raises became what they are, who's doing what, and that thing. And I think we need to do wage tables, and there's some work I need to do to, to, to do raises. So we can talk about a raised part of money. There's not one in here now. We can do that later. So as we, I don't know if you wanna go down line by line. I, I'm just gonna hit the big, big things, Boya. Selectmen, there's no change there. The meeting secretary, the way the meeting secretary was in the budget, it was scattered everywhere. So there was money here, money there, money everywhere. I just put the meeting secretary in the telecom line, just to make it easy for accounting purposes. And we'll get to that when we go. So when you see that and the difference, you're gonna have to go through the whole budget, this budget, add up wish, where that person lived in each one of these, um, each one of these departments, if you will. They're not even departments. This is what was weird about this budget, that what I'm used to is we budget by department. And here, we budget by facilities and administration. I mean, there's even one here for office expenses. Well, all departments have office expenses. So it was kind of weird for me to adjust to. So that's, that has been taken out of the personnel budget. So the town clerk salary, that is what the town clerk makes at her current rate. It obviously changed in, um, the budget season with twenty-two and twenty-three. You can see her actuals, but that is actually her salary at thirty-two hours and fifty-two weeks a year. The clerk benefits. The number you see there, the clerk doesn't take insurance, okay? She, she doesn't take, so she's entitled to, you know, twelve hundred dollars because she doesn't take it, plus dental. If the clerk leaves and we don't fund that insurance line, I have no money to offer that. So we fund the position, we don't fund the person. It's just, that's just fundamental budgeting. Yeah?
So if that money doesn't get spent, what happens to that money?
It goes back into undesignated funds.
It can't be used in another line?
It could.
It's your balance.
It could if the other budget lines aren't up to where they should be. So if you cut other budget lines and I run out, I'm gonna have to take it from somewhere.
Only, that could only be used within administration.
Exactly.
That's right.
Okay.
Okay? And you're gonna see that right down across the board. So the, the deputy tax collector treasurer, that's what that position makes at the current rate. The benefits, same thing. It's the same single, single allotment for healthcare. No different. Selectman's salary is pretty much unchanged. It just got loaded into the budget. That's why you see a difference is because it got loaded into Trio wrong. Some numbers got transposed. That's what happened there. The code enforcement, I'm not sure what went on there. You can see the, the actual budget and then, but what I'm proposing is exactly what he makes per hour, except I added a thousand for his mileage. So if you look over in the comments, you actually, if you, if you add up his salary with his mileage, that's what it equals.
Jerry?
For eight oh eight, yeah?
If I may. We had, we, combination of the selectmen and the budget committee talking about fees associated, and I don't, I don't know whether the selectmen have voted on or worked on fee schedule, adjusting the fee schedule, because it was, to my understanding, that it needed to be changed and increased so it's more reflective of the cost. And whether that's somewhere here in the budget, I don't know that. Has anything been decided on by the selectmen?
No.
With fee schedules for building permits and such?
We haven't, the code officer and myself have talked about fee schedules. We're working on, we just haven't brought that discussion to the select board yet.
Because that, that is, that is something that the selectmen can take care of. It does not need to go to town vote. We split that last year or the year before.
Alan has been working on fee schedules, been looking at other towns, what they charge for certain permits, and he's put something together.
Thank you.
We just haven't gotten to that point yet.
Thank you.
So is it possible that the difference is just the fact, weren't we without a code enforcer for a little while last year? Isn't that why there's a disruption between the, the number last year and what the plan is for this year?
Maybe that, but maybe Alan negotiated a higher rate of pay to get him here.
Yeah, that's true because that, that would've, that would've explained a difference between budget and actual. But budget and actual are actually pretty comparable there. But I, I think actually it, it might be more related to how things were getting coded in Trio. We, that, that has probably been the biggest black hole of the whole process is how things were getting coded in Trio and trying to figure that out. And Jerry's done a ton of work, you know, basically trying for this year, like, this year's about re-establishing the baseline, you know, so that going forward, everybody understands, you know, what means what in Trio and the right accounts are set up and that-
Right.
Your, your numbering system is how we want it and all that other stuff, so.
Consistency is what I'm trying to, to establish.
Um, is the code enforcement officer position salary or hourly?
It is hourly.
Okay, thank you.
Are we supposed to be letting you, like, just present first and then ask questions?
I'm open.
Yeah, well, yeah, so, so the purpose of tonight is to not necessarily get into the weeds because you guys are gonna have follow-up meetings where you can ask, you know, and it's a fine line. I mean, we wanna, if, you know, general questions, we wanna address what we can, but we wanna keep things moving, too. So as long as we're keeping things moving, I think it's fine to address what we can tonight. But we're gonna, I think we time-box this thing for like nine-thirty. We're not going beyond nine-thirty.
You told me nine.
Okay, nine, even better. All right? So as long as we're making progress, because, like I said, he's trying to get through everything tonight except fire, public works, and capital.
Yeah, but we, but we are doing fire because Chief Tri-
Oh, that's, you're trying to do that, okay.
He'll do, he'll do his tonight, too.
Really? So there will be more opportunity to ask more questions?
Well, I'm gonna do the others, I'm gonna do like the animal control. I'm gonna do it all except for, but it's pretty, it's been, most of the budget's pretty flat except for this, this budget, so. So we, so we, so the big discrepancy you see in the, in the benefits for the CEO, that's the family plan. He doesn't take insurance. I don't, he, so that's why you see that twelve oh two there, and that's why you see the discrepancy. Yeah?
Okay, but you just said for the town clerk, you're funding it as if it's a full-time position that takes health insurance.
Single.
Single health insurance.
Because I'm afraid if I, if I put, I would prefer to put the family plan in because if somebody leaves and they come and we get someone else and they want the family plan and it's not funded, what do we do, right? I mean-
So we currently pay for family plan at the employee wants it?
Yes. Twenty-four thousand five hundred bucks. Just, well, you know, you can see where it was at twenty-four one seventeen. Okay, yeah?
Can I ask, when was the last time that that was shopped around? And I know you guys-
What was shopped around?
Two years ago.
September. You have to be here for September for that.
Two years, two years ago.
Two years.
Shopped around for what?
Shopped health insurance rates.
Well, that comes from MMA.
Right, but I think, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, I think you're asking, did we shop other options besides MMA?
Correct, right.
Yeah, that was two years ago.
MMA's nonprofit, by the way, so they're probably your better option.
Yeah, and the, I think we've done that, we roughly do it every two years, uh, two or three years. And so it's been done two or three times since I've been on the board. And MMA has always by far been the cheaper option, but we do look.
MMA is your friend. They, they do, they work, they, they work for us. I mean, they help us. I don't know if anyone's told you that or not, but they're your friend.
We, we, sorry, we also, we also benchmark, like, what percentage is a town we're paying for single and family versus other comparable towns, and we're kind of right in the middle. You know, some, some towns are more generous and some towns are less generous.
So whether, whether the town would pay a hundred percent?
Yeah, we don't pay a hundred percent.
We don't, right. We pay eighty percent.
Thank you.
All right, and then you get down to my salary, that's, you know, per the contract.
I skipped a couple of lines.
Oh.
The intent is not to go, we're not going line by line.
Well, what line do you want?
The line that you skipped, I had a question. So there's ten twenty-one, administrative assistant benefits. Who's the administrative assistant?
Uh, it's our part-time person right now.
So they get benefits?
No, but that's what it would be if we had one.
If we had what?
If we had someone that, it's, it's labeled assistant, but if we get another full-time to come in, that's the salary, the, um, single benefits that we would have.
Wouldn't you be, but you're talking a year out because unless there's gonna be a, a warrant question regarding that position, then why would we even be talking about funding benefits?
There doesn't need to be a warrant question for a position.
Right.
You don't?
No.
No.
It's not, he's, he's free to do, within the budget, he's free to do whatever he needs to do.
So he can, he can create a new position or, and hi- hire?
If, if he can cover it in the budget, yes.
So Jerry, is line ten twenty and twenty-one, is that the same?
Yeah, yeah, so if I bring someone on, if, if we can bring someone on it, that's the salary and that's our benefits.
I think some of the confusion is in line ten twenty, you call him a deputy clerk, and then ten twenty-one, you call it the admin assistant, so.
Well, right, and that's, that's the way it was.
Yeah, no, I'm just, that's, that's-
It's a great example of what he was to do.
I think that's what Ruth's cat, we shouldn't say people's names.
No, right.
The previous person in that role was called the administrative assistant, and so it's probably just mislabeled from then.
So, so if I understand this correctly, we're looking at right now a town clerk along with a tax collector?
Yeah.
Correct. Along with a potential third full-time person with benefits.
Counterperson, yeah.
We can talk about it in our separated, right? Is that, okay, go ahead.
Okay, and, and I'll, I can give you a report that Jessica did. What I had her do is I looked up the population of main towns, found Durham, took the ten above it, took the ten below it. We called up those town offices and said, who do you have on staff for counter help? We've done that, and I can hand that out to you so you have something to go by and what other people, other towns are doing. And I can tell you, most towns, their clerk and their treasurers, they have their own office. They hire counter help. Even towns very close to our population. Some of these towns, they're a little bit bigger, they have tax bases where they can afford it, but they still just have as many people going to that window, registering their vehicles, doing this, and it gets extremely busy in that office. And if we don't have that third person to cover lunches, breaks, vacations, training, we're swamped. And if you go into that town- And if you go into that town office during voting time, where voting rules have changed, it is crazy. Half of the people in this town voted absentee and it's, and it taxed our employees to the point where it was, it wasn't pleasant. So, I just throw that out there to you.
So, is it, is it fair to say that you're building this budget, um, with the, looking to making what is the third person we brought into the office? Moving that from part-time to.
To full-time.
Funding that full-time.
And almost like a floater, because, um, there are other needs. I mean, you're probably at some point gonna hear Calvin wanting some help, okay? So, let's think about this, so we have the fire department with one employee, okay? He does a great job and there's a lot of billing and there's all that, well, he has an administrative assistant for twenty-one hours. Calvin has six employees, twice the budget, and doesn't have anyone to help him with billing or any of that. So, there's a, there's enough slack in that, um, office where we can tighten up and get more stuff done, help, help Calvin out. And let's face it, I mean, a lot of, a lot of public works, cause I was there, they're busy out on the road and don't have a lot of time to update their safety manuals. Do their safety stuff, uh, help with billing, help with coding, do some research. So, he's gonna be asking for that, not this year, but next year, cause he's already, he's already informed me. So, I don't wanna steal his thunder, but this is an opportunity where we could get this full, another full-time person and help with a lot of different things. And to help make this town run a little bit more efficient and get us off the worst rating you can have in the, in the audit report. Cause things just don't get reported correctly.
Um, so, we don't need to talk about this right now, but maybe we could just make a note for when we're separated. Um, one of the things that was asked last year when we were talking about the part-time position was, um, some kind of data about the hours during that peak time? And to be able to back up and justify.
The peak time is, we, we, well, more than, you know, but it's, it's not that cut and dry.
I'm just giving.
Peak times of all the year go up and down.
And the other thing would be that if you're talking about contracting out the accounting, how that would figure into this person turning into full-time?
That's coming.
Okay.
We're gonna, I'm gonna do my due diligence and figure it out.
Okay.
It's, and it's not gonna happen overnight.
Yep, no, that's fine, I just think that those are questions that will come up, so I was trying to give you a pre.
Right, right, I appreciate that. And then the rest, so any other questions before we move down to, um, health and FICA and Medicare, they've all increased. And it is what it is, it's a, we don't control that. So, the eighteen thousand's gone to twenty. And some of these, some of these old numbers, based on how it was put in and, and workman's comp was a little bit of an issue. That has now since been resolved, um, that's why you're seeing some of these numbers that are a, a little screwy as we go down. And I'll explain it to you when you get there, but, but your, your FICA, Medicare and that ICMA four oh, and I think that was the last, or adminis- that's gone away. We don't do that, I don't, I don't get into that program.
So, we do mainstay retirement, but we do, don't do ICMA?
Yeah, that's what I do, yeah.
So, the previous town manager was the one that was part of that, and now it's been, that was the only one, perfect, thank you.
ICMA, it was, yeah, right, so we took it out. Okay? So, office expenses, as you go down through, they're pretty much keeping it the, the way it is. The, the insurances have gone up a little bit, um, you can see the workman's comp for office expenses. And I don't, I don't even know why workman's comp is even in that line, to be, to be honest with you. This is what's confusing to me about this whole, this whole budget, it's, it's been, um, interesting.
If the insurances, what are those insurances for? If the insurances for like the health insurance is in the top part of this, what insurance are we talking about there?
That's a good question.
Is, is that so like casualty business, like liability type insurance maybe?
Oh, that is, it's social security.
That's FICA.
What was it?
Yeah. This is, this is what I'm, this is, this is what I've been going through, folks, seriously.
Okay, so, that, uh, that's definitely something that I would ask at the next meeting.
I'd have to go look in Trio and see what insurances that was, that was paid, and perhaps I should've done that already, but I've been, I've been eyeballing this budget for two months, trying to figure it out.
Okay, thank you.
Yup. The Trio software just went up. It's a little less than twenty-one thousand, but in budgeting, I don't, I don't worry about the cents. You know, it's probably, the actual thing is probably twenty thousand eight hundred and sixteen dollars, so I just rounded up to twenty-one. The equipment lease is pretty much the same, everything else, um, is, is pretty much the same except for the supply line. This is one thing that happened through the year. So, we have our equipment lease and we have overages, you pay for the overages on your copy, okay? So, halfway through the year, they were getting coded in the supply line. Then the supply line was starting to get over budget, so then they started coding it to the lease. So, I, I've been chasing this and it's all of this stuff that I've been working at. So, what I did was I removed it, um, and that, oh.
It's gotta show up somewhere.
You know?
Well, it's showing a jump.
Huh?
It's showing, it's actually showing an increase.
How much, twelve bucks? Is that what it is?
The increase went from thirty-eight eighty-nine to fifty-five.
Where, on the equipment lease?
On the supplies.
Supplies.
No, the lease went down twelve bucks.
He removed it from the lease and put it in the supply.
Right. By the same amount of money.
So, that it's clear where the money should come from.
Right. In overage, um, you don't know what you're gonna have for copy overages in a, in a, in a, when it's a big election year, like in the presidential election year. We'll probably have more copies of things made, that, that fluctuates up and down. And it fluctuates on how many copies you're gonna make and revisions you're gonna do, but it's just standard in the, in the business. I don't see it really being any higher than it is, but it could be, but it wouldn't be much. And then the selectmen discretionary didn't change. Right, so Department Six, um, there's really not a lot of change in there either, um. I, it's, it's relatively, it's relatively flat for the most part.
Uh, just an odd question, if the line three thousand two, so if we're anticipating an increase in electricity? Then why would there be a decrease in three thousand five, in three thousand three, which runs off electricity?
Well, cause I'm going by the actual. Aren't you a fan of the actual, Mel?
Bazinga!
But why is the actual higher?
Sometimes that question's not necessary to.
No, no, I get it, right.
If you're anticipating an increase in, in a line, then if it had a line that's related, it would seem to me you would anticipate a similar increase.
Well, I'm, I'll be happy if you wanna raise it.
Thank you.
Maybe Jerry was anticipating the, the grant that we're gonna work on, so he was waiting.
Propane the same, I didn't really, I, you know, again, when we met in the budget, when we had this meeting, I mean, all of these are forecasts. I mean, my guess really, when you look at the actuals, it's just as good a guess as your folks, so, you know, guess away, really, seriously. I'm, I'm trying to keep it as low as I can, I mean, don't think for a minute, a new town manager wants to come in here and blow the budget up and raise it. I, I do not wanna do that, some of these I do get nervous, that they're not high enough. But I just want you all to kinda know who I am and how I'm thinking before, you know, cause I didn't wanna come in here. I mean, twenty percent in the administration budget alone is, is scary enough. But it's, if you really, if you really nail down to it, it's really not that, because things weren't really entered correctly, so it skews the numbers. So, I'll just, I'll just say that to you too.
Jerry, can I ask you a question about a line? So, if, tell me if this would be what your preference is, I'm gonna ask specific questions when we break out.
Yup.
Um, do you want the heads up ahead of time, so that you can like make a note to be able to find that out before you come to us again?
Well, it'll, it'll depend on what you want me to find out, cause I may, I may just deny it.
So, do you want me to, do you want me to tell you now?
Sure.
Okay, so, there's office telephone, the three five oh four. Um, and if I remember correctly, when we did the ARPA and we did the whole phone system and, and that type of thing, we were prepaying. So, I, I would just like clarification on that, if that number is a monthly bill that we're paying for office telephone? And how that is affected by what we did with the ARPA stuff? But you don't have to answer now.
Okay.
That's just something I'm questioning about that line.
So, the difference isn't gonna be all that much, regardless of what we paid before and the new contract now, so it's, it's.
So, the new contract when we got the new phones didn't include any payment type situation? Like, I know when we did the GIS software, we prepaid for two years, and I thought we had done the same with the phones.
I don't believe so, we just pay by the month, um, I think it's a little bit more, cause we're getting faster internet and that sort of thing. But it's not a whole lot where it's gonna really make a difference in the overall.
Okay.
Tax impact, if you will.
Are the actual numbers accurate?
Are the actual numbers accurate? Yes, as they were in Trio.
Does that mean they're accurate or not?
You tell me, you know, I don't know.
Maybe.
So, yeah, so like how you were saying like the.
You need to, I'm just, I, cause I, cause I look at, you say twenty percent, but it's more like thirty percent if you look at actual.
Okay.
So, that's, that's how I think.
That's fine, yup.
Jerry?
Yup.
We have thirty-five oh four, which is office telephone, and then thirty-six oh three, which is telephone. Just thought I'd find it out.
Yeah, that may be for the union church though.
Right.
Didn't they have to have an emergency phone or something?
Yeah, they, and there's, there's, um.
Union church, I thought, has their homepage.
No, it's in, it's security and electricity.
So, it's probably a phone for the security line would be a good, a good guess.
I, if I remember correctly, and this was years ago, they had to put a phone in at some point at the union church, right?
At the union for security, yeah.
Oh, yeah, the security over there would require a phone line, yeah.
Security works.
And they're all lined up together, so.
You guys, you guys test that, did you?
We said it.
We tested it.
Can you just, if you, if you have time, just find out for sure that that is.
I'm, I'm most positive it is, we can check, but you, they're all lined right up. I'd have to, I'd have to pull out of Trio the thirty-six oh three and see what it is, but I, but I can assure you that it's not gonna say the union church in Trio. You won't.
Maybe it will go forward.
Jerry, is office telephone, all the, the internet, is that all the high technology stuff? I mean, it's more just the phone, right? It's whoever we have a contract with for Comcast or whomever, that's.
Yup.
Technology?
Yeah, and then the, the security end is a little bit different, that's, has, that's separate, so we're all trying to.
Well, the union church, I understand, but so that, in my mind, internet, everything gets rolled up under telephone.
Under Comcast, yup. And that's when, when, when we got the new computers, you know, and that's, that's when I first came in, when Comcast was coming on board and trying to figure out what, how we went about that. And the computer, I mean, cause I was at this August twenty-second, no, August sixteenth town, special town meeting, and that was all discussed, so.
Okay, so that's all the technology.
Yeah, and it, it is all the technology stuff, yup. Janitorial wages, I, I basically kept it, I kept it flat, even though the actual's a little bit down. If we get used in this, um, maybe we'll get clean more, I don't know, I just left it there, if you wanna play with that number, you know, it's. It's, yeah, it's cheap, so. All right, Department Seven, uh, pretty much left the election payroll alone. We did decrease the elections, just because we didn't spend all that much, but I didn't wanna bring it down too, too low, um, just in case we need something. Again, these are forecasts, you don't know what you're typically gonna need, we might need another booth, so we just leave it in there in case you, in case you need it. And that's, that, that's what these operational budgets, none of us have a crystal ball, you don't know what's gonna happen, um, you don't know what's gonna break. So, in talking with the, the election clerk, and we talked about that, when I saw the actual, I asked her if she thought we could reduce that a little bit? And that's the number we come up with. Legal, I left alone, um, didn't need a, didn't need a lot this year, um, audit. Audit went up.
Sounds like we need it.
Audit went up, and I, I have an email if you wanna see it, but RKO ate sixty-one hundred dollars when they did our audit. That's how much time they spent on it, and we didn't have the money in it, and they knew it, and they work with us. So, that's what happened, and she said, I need to, I need to, um, increase it to this number. So, that's what it is, that's just a, that's a quote from, from RKO auditor. Training, I, 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 uh, I increased, I increased it because new staff needs extensive training. And again, this is why right now we need that third person, because if we send people to training, we got no one to really run that counter. So, or if they're even having training in the office with someone, someone either comes in or they're on, they're, they're busy, they can't, they can't, they can't do it all. So, that's a, that's another reason, and, and, and we, we all need a little training, but you get that with, with new staff. MA dues, it is what it is, um, I didn't increase it by much, that was the actuals, that's what it came in, I increased it by forty-seven bucks. GP COG dues, it is what it is, FICA, all of these other things are pretty much the same except for forty-five twenty-eight. This is one thing that I noticed in the town of Durham's budget when I came on, that there's no contingency line for anything that you might need. That's tip, that's unusual. But for, for example, we haven't reconciled our bank statements since April of twenty twenty-one, so I had to hire someone to come in and do it. So, that's a line that you would use to take care of that, and you, and you just don't know what's gonna happen throughout the year where you may need some money. And it's basically a scenario of it's better to have it and not need it, and need it and not have it, unless you wanna do special town meetings, because we're, we need the money and we need to spend it. You wanna go that route, that's fine, but I just, a lot of municipal budgeting has a discretionary line for those types of smaller emergencies that are not catastrophic. Cause if you do that, you're probably gonna dip into a designated fund situation.
Since twenty twenty-one?
What's that?
Has it been reconciled? April of twenty-one?
Twenty-one. Yup.
Twenty-one or twenty-two?
Twenty-one, April of twenty twenty-one, our bank statements have not been reconciled.
They have it now, they have it now, though.
But we're getting, we're getting it done now.
How could they do an audit without looking at our bank statements?
They do the best they can with the stuff that they give them, and that's why our audit report is the worst rating you can get from the governmental auditing standards. Well, it's not pretty.
So, is this a new line item?
That is a new line item that I, that I put in, yeah, and.
Since April twenty-one.
So.
I think of the last management, it didn't do nothing.
That would be another one that I'd mind if you increased, but I didn't wanna do it, I don't wanna, I didn't wanna scare you by it, again. Ten thousand dollars puts three cents on your mill rate, ten grand, that's, that's what it is, three cents on your mill rate, just, just throwing that out there to you.
A lot of ten thousand dollars, this stuff.
Huh?
There's a lot of ten thousand dollars.
What, yeah? Yeah, go ahead, Jerry.
Before you close the page, I had asked at the last meeting, what is the plan? Before you close the page, I had asked at the last meeting, what is the plan to not have us be the perfect storm for embezzlement like we have done since April of twenty one?
Embezzlement?
Oh yeah, we have no clue if the money's there or not. We'll find out once this bookkeeper is done.
Well, but embezzlement is, is.
Dramatic overstatement.
Yeah.
No, but I'm just saying, going, I had asked you the last time, going forward, how are we gonna make sure that the job is getting done on time versus catch up and hiring a rescue person? Cause I don't see anything in your budget and it could be mixed in someplace, but I'm just curious that, how do you plan on keeping up?
How do I plan?
He's hiring a third person.
I'm gonna, yeah, I'm gonna hire a third person. Then you have me to keep an eye on things.
But you have, so you're hiring a fourth person?
Nope.
No.
Cause you already have a third person.
Just lost a person.
Part time.
Part time. She had, she was only, she just started. When did you start?
June.
June? Oh, oh, what do you mean? She doesn't know about.
She doesn't know that the deputy treasurer.
Oh, oh, yeah, so the deputy treasurer seat is vacant.
Okay, so we're hiring a new deputy treasurer.
Yep.
So, I mean, we still have three people in the budget and so you wanna hire a fourth person?
Yes.
Or make the third person full time?
No, it's going from two and a half to three.
Right.
Okay.
Call it that, yeah.
Okay, thanks for the clarification.
And I think that's part of, uh, like when, the line that Jerry put in for professional services contingency, that's, that's where he would pull funds, like he already used as an example, where he had, he's got somebody that he's actually already brought in to help catch up on the reconciliation of accounts. That's already in progress. So that, but he's working that within the larger administrative article. He doesn't have a specific line to, you know, kinda pull that from.
I, I, I pulled it out, I'm pulling it out of legal, or I was.
Okay, yeah, so.
That's where I can get it from. If, now, if legal had been close to the end, I don't know what, I, I don't, I wouldn't have had much to work with to, to, to get this worked on, this reconciliation. I don't know what I would, I would've gone to the select board with you and informed them of what was going on and how do you wanna.
But you're thinking by having three full time, we'll be able to keep the books clean after day?
I'm thinking of three time, three people to do the work on the window so people can get trained so we can do the books. And that includes me as well. Absolutely, it's, you, it, you can't run your reports. I mean, these, my staff, or our staff, I should say, cause they, it is really our staff. I mean, they're working that window all the time and they've got all kinds of reports that I'm learning that they're actually doing where they, they're, they're getting them done, but not as efficient as they could be, so that, that, we have two and a half now, but, and we're doing better. I mean, some of the slack has been picked up, but if we, if we just get them on there full time, um, we're gonna be more efficient at what we're doing and that's really where I'm going with it.
The other thing I would add in the conversations that Jerry and I have had, um, and with the board as well is that when he goes to fill that deputy treasurer position, the plan is to fill that with someone at a much higher skill level, uh, than we've had in the past. More, more accounting and finance, uh, background, um, than we've, than has previously been the case. So that, that, so not only is it going two and a half to three, but the skill level in-house of the three will be higher.
Mm-hmm, and, yeah.
So you wanna hire somebody that's a better skill level, but you're planning on paying them less?
Well, they, well, the person that I'm paying less isn't gonna be doing that where the treasurer that was in there was, was doing that. So now I have an opportunity to hire someone at a higher, higher skill level.
Okay, but you're planning on doing it at a lower salary according to the line?
No, it's increased fourteen ninety four.
Well, from actual, sorry.
Yeah, and keep in mind, that position just, um, became vacant on Friday. So there might, there might be, there might be some tweaking of the budget to.
Yeah, there needs to be.
To account for, as you're pointing out, that position's gonna cost more money. So, um, it may be that the budget might need to be tweaked a little bit at, at that line level to, to represent that. But he's just at the beginning of going through the process of doing the due diligence, like even benchmarking what that uh, number might even be, you know, so just start.
And, and two, when I emailed you all and said the budget books were ready, ten minutes later, I, an employee comes in and, and it's got more bills. These things need to be adjusted and it, so this is a really kind of fluid, so, but, but at the end of the day, it's, doesn't really affect the budget all that much. You're really talking twenty five percent of your overall budget. So certain items in there really is pennies on the dollar and I know they add up, but just, I wasn't, I wasn't pleased that I got thirty thousand dollars worth of invoices that would change things and changes line. The, the, the email that I sent to you, that, the spreadsheet, you'll see down below where I calculated what was left on the table, what we didn't spend. Well, that's not accurate anymore because the bills came in, so things are moving all the time. You know, and, and again, municipal budgeting, when you're doing this, these aren't quotes, these aren't estimates. It's a forecast of what you think you can get away with to get through your year. And it's anybody's guess. And that's why we go with what we budgeted and you look at your actuals and then you go from there. In the, in the municipal, like I explained, in the municipality I worked at before, this is a pretty tight scheduled timeline too when you, when new bills are coming in, we're meeting, there's questions, I mean, things are just going all the time. I started this process three months prior to going through this budget and you went on percent spent. And you tried to do your budget based on percent spent because there's so much that needs to happen. Of course, it was a big municipality. There was police, there was fire and everybody has to meet. So this is unusual for me to have such crunch time to try to put together a budget where folks like actuals and I'm still getting invoices for twenty two that, and we're working on the twenty three budget, so, you know, you do the best you can. It's, it really is forecasting. And you, you know, you'll have your meeting, you'll, you'll be doing plenty of forecasting yourself.
So I don't know if this is a question for tonight or not, but if we add extra people on to be able to catch up so we're not falling behind, where is the checks and balances? Where does that fall on who?
It falls on me.
It does.
Yeah, that's, that, that falls on me. And it's, and, and again, it's not catch up. It's trying to be more efficient. And, you know, it's almost, I, I don't have a great analogy. It's almost like you have three quarters of a tank of gas and you top it off with water. And you're just chugging along, you're just chugging along. You, you're getting there, but it's, it's not very efficient. If you fill it up with what you really need to run the, the automobile, you'll run more efficiently.
So would it be a correct assumption to, to say that in the past, it should've been the town manager's job to do the checks and balances and it just did not happen?
Who said it did not?
I don't know, well, there's no chance of that.
Since April of twenty one.
But, but, but hold on folks, but Durham has, Durham has kinda gone through a little transition here. You know, you've kind of lost some folks and things, I, I wasn't here, all I did was apply to an ad on MMA. And here I am, okay, so.
How do you like it, soapbox?
Okay, so, I, I, I can't really speak to what went on and who did what. I, I know these people. They're wonderful people. I've known them for a long time. And it's always good to kinda glance in the rearview mirror to see what happened. But my eyes out the windshield and we're moving forward and that's what I'm trying to do with this whole.
I understand that and I'm not trying to point fingers, I'm just trying to say, how do we prevent this from happening in the future?
You keep Jerry Douglas on as your ten.
I think that's, I think that's what he's trying to set up here with.
That was a good lead in.
I, I think that's what he's trying to set up here is, is get to the point where, you know, so with the, the new person that he brings into the treasurer finance role and the roles he assigns to himself and, you know, and, and what the town clerk and, and Cindy will do in the office, you know, to get duties assigned so that they're kinda following the recommendations of audits so that you don't have the same person, um, you know, uh, handling the money and also, you know, making sure that the handling of the money was proper, you know, like dividing that out. And I know Jerry is, he's all over that. And I think, you know, in the past, the, this is, um, I think part of what we're seeing here is the cumulative effect over several years of not having a town manager and not having that one person that was responsible across departments to make sure everything was running the way it should. So in some ways, we're kinda paying the price for being as late as we were to have that one person, um, uh, have a, a general oversight and be looking down the road, big picture versus we go from like month to month to budget to budget and without really considering the bigger picture, so, so there's a lot of, you know, establishing that baseline that I mentioned earlier that, that Jerry is going through right now in the transition.
Segregation of duties is really important. Cause if something were to happen and it's, and it, and this has happened in towns and I'm not, I'm not saying that anything like that has happened here and certainly I don't like the word embezzlement, but it does happen. When you have the same person writing the checks, reconciling the books, handling the cash, taking it to the bank, that, that, that's not gonna happen under my watch. I've worked very, very hard at what I've done, my reputation, my name and that is, that's not gonna happen. I can't let that happen, period.
One of the things that I took away from the last meeting was it seems you have a better relationship, working relationship with the auditor than we've had in the past and she's already agreed to come back after this next audit to fill us in and not wait until December to tell us what happened and how, how to resolve it.
When does the audit, like when does that take place?
February sixth, she's coming in and, and you all, do you all know how that works? She, they come into the office for a week, they're in the select lens room and they're going into those files and they're saying, I wanna see this, I wanna see this, I wanna see that. And you give it to them and they, they dig right down into it. And it, it's three or four days and that, they're, and they really are your friend. And I, I just don't want a report like that while I'm manager. I, I don't. So I'm gonna do everything I can to, to make that report look a little bit better than the way.
The analogy we used at la, at our last select board meeting was, you know, it's, it's like if you have an accountant doing your taxes and you just give them this box of loosely unorganized documents and receipts and whatever, say, here you go, do my taxes. That's kinda like, and not to that extent, but that's kinda like how our audit has been, um, recently. So he's working closely with the auditor to like, um, establish best practices, get the Trio accounts set up and organized right so that things are getting posted correctly, reports come out correctly, the auditor can trace everything and so it's a lot of, um, it's a lot of like organization setup type work that he's going through right now, again, to get us to that solid baseline starting point.
And Heather, the auditor did say, if I remember correctly, it's like two to three months or three to four months before she actually presents the report.
Right.
Just because she's coming in February doesn't mean we're meeting like March first to hear about the audit.
Right.
The goal, and I, I, I don't know if I can achieve this or not, but the goal would be to have the books really good. So she can come in in January and we can put that audit report in the annual report for that year. That would be sweet.
Yeah.
Don't know if I can get there, don't know if it's possible. That's, that's the goal. So, I mean, I was gonna put the, the one we just got into this town report, but that didn't really make a lot of sense, so I'm not, you know, I'm not, I'm not gonna, but that, that's the goal. I've got a, I've got a few goals that I wanna try to accomplish and we'll see how we do. And I, I just gotta have the staff that, it's a good staff. We just gotta get going, oil machine. My job is to really kinda oversee it, make sure it's going good, so I can kinda work on the, like, the bigger things cause there's always people that wanna come in and see me. They have ideas that I gotta bring to the select board and what the vision is for the town and just all kinds of different things, um. I'm not, I'm not sitting there, um, twiddling my thumbs very much. I'd, I'd like to. But it's been good. I mean, we're in good financial shape. I'm not, I'm not trying to, you know, worry you. There's nothing to panic about. It just needs to be organized a little bit better and not only organized, but, but put in a, in a format where if you, if you all get sick of me and you, and you kick me out of here, that I leave it for somebody that they can actually.
Figure it out.
Figure it out, exactly. I'm not doing it for me, I'm doing it for all of you. So when the next person comes in, they're like, okay, boom, 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 this is what this is. Just like your question that you answered, asked the other day, Jane, about the fire hydrants and insurance, is that part of the ambulance thing? Kind of a weird name, isn't it?
Yeah, it doesn't make sense.
So there's a lot of cleanup that I can do and I will do, but it's gonna, just give me a little bit of time and we'll get there. I, I, I promise.
I do wanna do a little bit of a time check. We're pushing up against seven thirty and we, we wanna do everything in fire in the next, except public works and capital in the next hour and a half.
Okay, so, so I'll leave, we'll skip fire and public works. We'll go right, right down alphabetically how we did this animal control. These are all pretty, pretty, pretty flat for the most part. Um, there's really no big changes. Coastal domain went up, uh, three hundred bucks. In animal, the, the contractor, the ACO, the animal control officer, I got the estimate from Lisbon. That's what we're looking at for this year. Okay, assessing is pretty much unchanged. I'm not sure why it was put in last year in the twenty two budget as all labor. It's not. Uh, our assessor is okay with the labor being that and I just left everything the same as it was in previous years. No, no change there. The cemetery, um, I.
Hold on, Joe, hold on, Joe, I have a question.
Um, mapping, is that the GIS mapping or is that a different mapping?
No, no, that's different mapping that, uh, that Donna takes care of to update so the GIS people can update what she updates. Yeah. Yep, you're welcome. The cemetery mowing contract, that's gone. I'm gonna have public works absorb that.
Meaning they're gonna mow all some.
Yep, they're gonna take care of it. It's forty five hundred bucks. They can do it. They can take care of it. Didn't really like it, but you know, when you're the town manager, you're gonna do it. So that's, so we took that, we took that up. Now, if that had been a fifteen, seventeen, twenty thousand dollar contract, I wouldn't have done that. Forty five, they can, they can take care of that. The abatements, um, I don't know, that, that really comes out of our, uh,
What are they? Overlay.
Overlay stuff, um.
That's one of the things the overlay is for is.
Right.
Is if you, if, what you assess in taxes, if there are mistakes and you have to, you know, refund some taxes. But sometimes there, this year there were almost as many supplemental assessments as there were abatements um, because of some issues with like how a subdivision that wasn't quite yet a subdivision.
Right.
Uh, was treated, um, so, but that's, yeah, that's standard stuff.
That's very difficult to.
Yeah, there's, there's a few of those every year.
What you're gonna spend because you don't know how that's all gonna work out. But that's why it's absorbed in the, the overlay.
Yeah, that's not something we raise money for.
Right.
Well, a- actually, it's not, we don't raise money in the operational budget. It, it gets, and it's not something that, that's a vote. It's the, it's part of the calculation of the mill rate where there's a very small percentage that is the overlay that gets, it's, uh, part of the mill rate, so that's where that comes from.
Okay, on to our conservation parks and recreation. This one took me a little while to figure out cause it all kinda got grouped and it was a little, a little confusing and, uh, when I got here, this was never loaded into Trio, by the way, so that's why it was confusing. It, it has now censed been and that's why you're, you're seeing that, but, uh, the nine eighty, that was historical, um, it didn't get done in twenty two. I, I don't know why. Park maintenance, um, kinda left it, you'll, if you look in the back, you'll see, um, what they, um, budgeted before, but it really needs a new sign. If you don't want a new sign, you can cut the budget, but the sign's about ready to, to fall over in the river park. That's why I bumped it up a little bit, paid for the sign. Conservation dues, flat. War Memorial Park, basically flat, now the. War Memorial Park, basically flat, now the flags, they used to buy flags, we didn't, I don't know if that was a pandemic thing.
It was, we tried to get them and they weren't available.
Oh, so I just, I put it in there, we want flags, it's been the same. The memorial day parade, we haven't done that, that's historically what was in there for a budget. If you don't wanna have a parade, you can cut it, I'm, I'm okay with it, I just threw it in there. You all know more about that than I do, you wanna have a parade, let's have a parade. Now, recreation, that, if you look back in years past, you know, nineteen, eighteen, it was funded. Durham Youth Baseball did reach out, asking for twenty-five hundred bucks, don't know if that's something we wanna do, but that five thousand should cover anything we wanna do in the recreation department.
So, if I recall historically, that was based on what various groups came to us ahead of time and requested. So, so far, the only one that's come to us is youth baseball.
Yeah, it's snowmobile club reached out for, it's snowmobile club too, right? Do they, right? Because we paid, we gave them one the last year, right?
And then softball would be the other one that, pre-pandemic, I think, yeah, a lot of things kinda fell off, like groups didn't come to us during the pandemic because they weren't holding their programs. I don't even, Rich, do you know, is the soft, are they still an organization?
Not as of late. I think, I think what you're gonna see is it's gonna be more of a tri-time, but it's, it's up, it's a fluid situation.
Okay, okay.
I don't, I'm not part of that board, same thing with baseball, I don't know if they, have they formally requested?
Yes, yeah, yes.
Okay, softball, as far as from, at this point, I believe they disbanded.
And it's varied over the years, anywhere from fifteen hundred to, I think baseball, one year, we did some extra money, or maybe it was softball for some fencing or something, I can't remember, but, yeah, that's pretty standard.
And then below that, Lois came with a, with a proposal or request for the Historic Preservation Commission and, and this is what she's requesting, so I, I just do that at the bottom. I couldn't, I could not include it, that wouldn't have been very nice of me, so I just threw it in, threw it in there. That was her request, she feels, you know, I thought she was gonna be, oh, she's right there. Do you, do you wanna speak at all about? Sure, I'm fine, you know.
Yeah, I would hold on.
Yeah, I don't need to, I just would ask for people to read it and consider it.
Okay.
And I, I think historically, pardon the pun, the historic, and work for the, that stuff has been in the planning article. It's been planning and historic district commission and I think that stuff, so that might be the place to put that. If, if you're, if you're gonna request money.
Put it where, I'm sorry?
Uh, the planning, that's where the historic, in the, in the past, that's where the historic.
Stuff was?
Stuff was, yeah.
And so with that in mind, there should be a, a number associated with it, account number.
Yeah, well, we, we'd set that up in, in Trio, if there hasn't been one, there isn't one. Or I can look, I, I.
Like, so like Kevin said, it was, been included in the planning.
Yeah, it wasn't in the planning, this, this little thing here that I saw.
Well, I think it's one of those deals where it's, it combines a couple of departments maybe into a single, like the recreation.
Oh.
Might be something like that.
Okay.
But.
But we got the numbers anyway and we'll figure out where that, where that goes. Eureka, you know, it's up, it's up a little bit. But the FICR is, FICR, the, I didn't change the electricity bill that much, the actual is even a little bit more. I don't know how much we're gonna use it, that's a discussion the town, I would like to have with the town to see if we do wanna use it, I do have quotes to get internet in here, I'll talk to the board about that at some point. But it, this is what it is, it's up fifteen hundred bucks. Planning, planning is, is pretty much unchanged, other than I, I took the meeting secretary out and just included that position in telecom because you're looking at him right there and, and this, and I just see no point in bouncing them around, from an accounting standpoint, it's a nightmare. I just have them under.
Jerry.
Telecom, yep.
I didn't see telecom anywhere, is there, I don't have a tab for telecom or I just didn't see it anywhere.
Oh, it's not in here?
Nope.
All right.
I did see, well, it's on our revenue.
It should be its own, did I not include it?
It's on your electronic one.
Huh?
It's on your electronic.
Oh, I didn't print it off, I'm sorry, I'll get it to you, I'm sorry.
All right, it's on the electronic one, you can see it there.
It's a different one, I wish I had it.
What else did you put in that budget that you're not showing us?
This was, you know, again, I, look, no excuse, it's on me, I forgot, I, I didn't print it off, but it is in the spreadsheet that I sent to you, you can, you can look at it. But planning is pretty much unchanged. It's, 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 it's the same, other than the removing the meeting secretary. Which is good. Solid waste, it's anybody's guess on where we're gonna land there, I, I, I just don't know. I, I, I put in three fifty, I had put something in, I, I just don't know what it's gonna be.
Do we think we're gonna know by the time we go to the town meeting?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, because we'll have to, we'll have to know the contract numbers, and we'll have to, we'll have to, yeah, we should know. We, ideally, we would know a month before a town meeting so that we can get it printed and the warrant and everything, so.
What's the, what's the due date on the quotes?
It hasn't gone, we're meeting with Casella tomorrow, I just kinda wanna get a feeling what they're, what, why they wanna talk to us. It's ready to go, and as soon as that meeting is over, it's going on, it's all drafted, ready to go. I was gonna put it out this weekend.
You're shooting for the end of January with.
Bid's, bid's in.
Bid's in.
Yep. So, yep.
Bulk waste day.
That's in there.
That's in there?
Yep, bulky waste is in, in the contract.
Raise the issue again.
But it was, it will probably, I think, just to honor what we had said, what we did last year, it'll probably be on the warrant as a separate article, we, the RFP does ask for it to be broken out as a separate line item charge.
And I just got the tonnage for December just a few days ago, so it's kind of good timing on that, I didn't wanna have the rest of the.
I mean, I, honestly, I mean, I think personally, I should say personally, I, I would like to see the town vote in favor of the bulky waste day, but it wouldn't, it doesn't feel like, you know, playing it straight if last year the town actually voted not to have the bulky waste day and then to not put the question before the town, bury it in the contract and have bulky waste day again. So, until the town actually voted to have bulky waste day, I wouldn't be comfortable including it just in the contract.
I'd just like to see us make, you know, we're starting to collect refrigerators and other things alongside.
Yeah, no, agreed, agreed, so.
Mark's keeping it in his yard temporarily.
I'm pretty, I'm pretty sure when I did the calculation where ten thousand dollars is three cents on the mill rate and a three hundred thousand dollar evaluation on your house is gonna cost you seven dollars and seventy-one cents.
So, Jerry, going back to Eureka, if I may, doesn't seem to be that there's any monies in there for turning this meeting hall into a regular meeting hall for the selectmen. What, where do we stand with that discussion?
I think that's, that, that probably would be more of a capital expense rather than an operating expense, and that's something we gotta, we gotta talk about because I believe it was you that came to the board and thought that would be a real good way of spending opera funds, that's a discussion that we, we still have to have.
Okay.
School, I don't know, I, I just put, I, I didn't know what to do there.
Usually we don't have school in this.
Okay, all right.
Because we don't, it's not relevant to what we're doing.
Right, right, it was in the thing, same with, how about general assistance, I just left that.
Yep.
Six hundred, just historical funding, and that, pretty.
Jerry, in the past, we gotta break out for debt service, I believe.
There is one.
I thought I, I thought we put that in there.
It's on your electronic one.
It's not in here?
I saw debt service on.
It's on the electronic one, Jerry.
Yeah, so that should have been, it should have, it was, it, it should have been, Mike, another error on, on me. Let me, uh.
Can you talk about the, the remaining bond payments and the schedule over the years that we're talking about?
Yeah, yeah, he did break down, we have, we had in the notebook the expense, brokered by expense.
Yeah, no, actually, that's, they usually, yeah, there's usually a, a tab for, for debt in here too, so.
Yeah, I had, I had.
Okay.
It's on the, I just didn't, yes, that's all right, clerical error. Well, it's, you know, it's, when I say it's busy in crunch time, it's busy and some things fall off.
Yeah.
I'm not making excuses, it's just a reason. That pretty much. Yeah, that's mine, I know what it looks like.
Can we just do it next time? I mean, we still got another.
Yeah, I can send it to you, I mean, it's in your, it's in the electronic one. Yeah. Yeah, it's in there, I just, I just failed to print it out and.
We still got Thursday to ask questions.
Yeah, we can, we got Thursday too, right?
And it's sad, it is what it is, there's no, there is no, no change in that. I, I don't wanna talk out of turn, but I think that, you know, debt is a, is, debt is debt and the town may wanna look at tax exempt leasing when we're buying these trucks and stuff because that's a little bit, that helps our cash flow, because we have cash flow that spikes and it's, that's a topic for another discussion, but.
Been brought up in the past.
So, we, we should look at that, I just, I just throw that out there, plant the seed and see how much we grow.
On your revenue breakdown, I, I did have a question. So, under office expenses, miscellaneous, it's just under revenue, it's just.
I know, and that's where he corners his page number.
I know where you're going, so right now.
It's a significant increase in twenty twenty-two, I just wonder what, what that, what the forty-five, six forty-eight.
Perfect, thank you for asking that question.
I'm sorry, can you, I was talking to Rich, I was like, what was the question?
So, on the revenue.
Miscellaneous.
Oh, miscellaneous.
Yeah, it was quite a increase in twenty twenty-two.
Um, so there was a, there was a Dean Smith type settlement. I don't know what the exact figure on that was, but that settlement, that's where, twenty, that's where that went into that line, miscellaneous line. The other part of it, another part of it is our workman's comp audited us and there was crickets when they needed information. So, what happens when that happens is they do their own audit and they increase our wages by twenty percent. So, I got a bill for sixteen thousand dollars from MMA for this audit, so I paid it. Got on the phone and said, you know, because there are, there are, they help us, you know? Got on the phone, they came down and basically explained, we reached out, needed numbers from you, didn't get anything, and that's what happened. If you give us the numbers now, we'll cut you a check, give you that money back. Gave them the numbers back and we got thirty-one thousand dollars back from workman's comp and that's the line that that went in.
Why wouldn't that get posted against as a credit in workers' comp?
Because we need to hire, I don't know, I, I don't know why.
Well, maybe it should have.
I don't know why, it, it, this is part of the training that we need to, we need to do. It's just like in your general ledger, folks, you're not gonna see the opera funds in your general balances. That also got put into revenue. It's not really revenue, okay, so when you close the books, your revenue for that year goes away, it zeros out and you start a new year. Well, that's where that opera money was, it's not a big deal, we'll journal it back, but it really should have gone into the general account so we can keep tabs on it. So, there's a lot of accounting and journaling back and forth that needs to happen to get this, our books and stuff like. Yep.
A second question, you, you referenced it earlier, so is there a different title for that line item?
Yes, that's ambulance reimbursements.
So, fire, department hydrants and insurance should have been labeled ambulance reimbursement.
We could, yeah, I'll talk with the chief and see if.
Where's that?
Oh, it's under FD hydrants and insurance, fire department, maybe he can speak to why it's labeled that, but he's somewhat doing so, so. But we, I, I, I think we can change it in the revenue. I, I, I think, like I said, I gotta dive into Trio myself, and I've been diving into it quite a bit, actually. But it's a very, it's a, it's a municipal accounting software. It's, it's not like Microsoft Word or Excel where you can pick up fairly easy, I mean, there's a lot to it and there's a lot that goes on behind the scenes. And a debit and a credit in, in Trio is the opposite of a debit and credit at the bank, so it gets confusing. Even, even, even for me, when I went and got my public management degree, I did not have to take one accounting class. I took budgeting classes, but not accounting, so that's kind of the piece the town is a little, is missing a little bit where we don't have that expertise and we, we really need it. From the, from the side of the glass that I sit on, you sit on the other side of the glass, you may see it differently, but from the side of the glass that I sit on, this is what I'm, this is how I see it, it's all, you know, so.
So, on the expense report, under solid waste is a two ninety-six, seven eighty-nine actual, which I guess is a Trio report.
Yeah, where is, what page?
Twelve.
Yep.
And then on the, on the spreadsheet, you got, you got that actual number and then three eighteen for the total.
It just looks like the formula wasn't carried over.
So, on the spreadsheet. So, what's on the spreadsheet now?
Three eighteen, one twenty-two.
Twenty twenty-two actual. Should have, should have just been the two ninety-six, zero.
Right, 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 I just, that's what, I just hit the sum button and, and that's.
That's what it looks like, the, the formula wasn't carried over, that's all.
What's it summing?
Right, well, but that's what the formula does, it sums the two lines, the twenty thirty and the fifty-five twenty. That's what it does, the formula after the formula.
I'd have to, I'd have to, if somebody's got it open, just click on the, just click on the solid waste.
It's a number.
The three eighteen, so it's just a number, so, that was there previous to me and I just didn't pay any attention to it.
So, so the two ninety-six is correct?
You're gonna, always gonna go with what, yeah, you're always gonna go with the Trio, what's in Trio, absolutely. That's why I wasn't gonna give you folks numbers on what we had in capital reserves because it was tracked in a spreadsheet and I'm, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not going there because it's, it's a personal spreadsheet. Kevin saw it, right? It, it was hard to navigate, it was hard to know what's going on. And so, now I'm a little bit more comfortable because the auditor came to the last meeting and gave us an updated report, so now I can go back to the warrants, I just haven't done it. I haven't done it on a couple items, but I haven't done it for the whole designated fund. So, I know public works is good, fire is good, municipal's good, this is just a few others that I have to look into to make sure that our designated funds are correct and go with it. But yeah, I just didn't, I just didn't do anything with that, that number. After a while, after a couple months of looking at spreadsheets, this all becomes very blurry. this all becomes very blurry. So that's, that's, that's pretty much all I got, Chief is here to do his, his, uh.
You have to wait him up in the back.
Yeah, do people wanna, do people need, do people need a five-minute, uh, break before we jump into fire, or people just want to keep going? Good to go, okay?
As Chief is walking up here, I had an issue with a family member, the ambulance showed up, and they did a, his crew, and the chief did a superb job, so, and there's a lot of people on television, I want to commend the chief for the way they took care of the situation.
We are, uh, we are very fortunate to have the department that we have, um, a, over and over again, I hear anecdotes about, you know, how our department performs so well, and then, and that's, that's, that's not true in a lot of other towns our size, so we're, we're very fortunate.
If you talk to Todd Boleo, he would tell you the same. We got, we got a really good email from Todd about the services that Chief and his, uh, his team provided, which was nice.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
As you know, that's, the three other members, I just happened to stand there and look pretty, but as that, or Todd, or these others, that's the, the volunteers across the street, so they deserve all the praise, they, they really do. We'll jump into this, I, I hope you all realize that under Jerry's short-term leadership, that three employees are here for free tonight on their own time, I don't know if you recognize that, but town employees are actually supporting him during this process, so that, that shouldn't go unnoticed, um, for free. Before you start beating me up, I appreciate it. Just, just know, because these are important numbers, our nine-one-ones for, for last year were up three and a half percent more, and our responses, overall responses, were up seven point six percent, so we did talk five hundred and twenty-one responses, uh, both fire and rescue side. So those, those are important numbers, and that'll lead into things like fuel and labor and whatnot. I know you have a lot of questions, we, we can go down this, this kept up. My, my plan literally was level funded, I, I, I explained that to the select board, to, to Jerry, I was trying to level fund this budget. I, I, I was taking pride in it, uh, right up until, as he said this week, you get a bunch of bills in the mail, and then your best laid plans. Uh, but we're close, it looks like a quarter of a percent increase. And, and let me tell you the importance of where those increases come from beforehand, but, you know, fuel's easy to see, propane's up, all, all that stuff. Our dispatch through Andrews Goggin County, uh, is up five percent this year, we get the bill a year in advance, um, but that's five percent, that's a thousand dollar increase. This year, we had a Maine EMS unfunded liability to, so to get our EMS license every year in November, e-everyone's in November, uh, we now have to contract with Medical Control a doctor, that's a thousand dollar contract, that Maine EMS this year in, in the fall said, and you have to do this. So for us, that, that's the lowest you can negotiate, it was about a thousand dollars, to have a local doctor out of mid-coast, so that's going to be an increase. As you know, minimum wage just went up January first, a dollar five an hour, whi-which is great, but seventeen of our members are based on minimum wage, a, a lot of the volunteers across the street get minimum wage. So, if you take those seventeen members times the hours that they produced last year between training and, and, uh, emergencies, that's going to equate to twenty-six hundred and twenty-five dollar increase in the budget just for minimum wage. Also, you'll see, and I'll show you the math as we go down, especially when we get to things like the workers' comp, FICA, Medicare, insurance, that, that all adds up if you do that, um, under manager proposal, that's seventy-five thousand dollars in my budget that I cannot control, I have no oversight over. Last year, it was sixty-six thousand, so thirteen percent of my overall budget, I, I, I don't see, and I have no control, and I still have to pay for it. That being said, um, and, and before we get into the nuts and bolts, uh, this year, the fire department turns seventy-five years old. So, um, we're celebrating, so tonight, these pins, members don't even have them yet, these are seventy-five-year pins, and, and first they go to the, to the select board for, for my appreciation and, and continued support. Again, Milk's going to yell at me, Milk doesn't even have one yet, but, uh. Thursday night, um, but it's important while we're on television to, to recognize, with all the accolades, that those volunteers turned seventy-five years old, and, uh.
I have a couple of years ago.
Yeah, you joined a couple of years before that, that's a true story.
You were founding member, Milk?
That's a true story. Betsy Ross and Milk signed it. But I, I want to take that opportunity, because when accolades are given out, we have to make sure that, that the members across the street deserve it. So, so we'll jump right in, i-if you've done your due diligence, especially for the twenty-two budget, you, you'll see labor was, was inflated, and again, that's a Trio install, I, I don't have access to Trio, so in the end, we'll, we'll, we'll talk about zero sum, really, because that's what it is, the budget. Twenty-two, our zero sum was four ninety-six, one ninety-three, and we spent four ninety-five, so we're, we're a thousand eleven hundred under, and I just got bills for one of the trucks, that'll push us for, uh, encumbering, we'll, we'll, we'll spend all that, so we're, we're, we're down to zero, and, and I might even owe money. Chief's salary is what it is, uh, that's just contractual, it's seventy-three five. Labor was added, a-as you can see, the actual one eighty, but, uh, it's one ninety-three, I'll have to absorb the twenty-six hundred for, um, minimum wage, and also the rest of that, eight thousand, nine thousand, is my part-time administrator, Captain. If she doesn't, you, if she takes a day off, she doesn't get vacation, and she doesn't get sick time, so that money stays in the budget, she doesn't even get paid. So, the twenty-one hours that she's supposed to work, I, I recoup that, but I have to have that in labor in case she works every day, you know, for the year. So all those numbers combined add up to the one ninety-three for the proposed, um, and again, Jerry and I have worked on this budget, this isn't, this is countless hours and hours of, of, uh, meetings with Jerry, he's kicked me out of his office a couple times. Uh, health insurance, a-as he explained, I do not take health insurance, so, so the benefit is the twelve hundred, uh, but that doesn't even pay, that line item doesn't pay if another chief comes in here, uh, and wants insurance, so that's why that's low. Workers' comp, so these next three, workers' comp, FICA, Medicare, you can see that the proposal for those three add up to seventy-five thousand, five seventy. Uh, again, I, I don't set those numbers, that, you know, that comes from MMA, uh, and I'm, I just eat those numbers in my budget, I, I have no control. Insurance, where it says Aflac, uh, we round it up, Jerry likes to round up, that's one thousand twenty-five. That's supplemental, in case one of the volunteers get hurt, that's supplemental insurance that we pay for, so that, that's what that line item is. It, it is shop four, but that, that's, you know, last year's rate. Electric, as you can see what we spent with, with those heat pumps that were installed, thank you, heating and cooling, uh, we're, we're saving on electricity. Propane's up. Maintenance and repairs, we'll, we'll try to keep that down. One of our pumper trucks is an oh-four, I just had to put springs and shackles in it, that's a six thousand dollar hit. Even with preventative maintenance, you, you don't, you know it's coming, you can plan for it, but when you go to get a, an inspection sticker, a-and they fail it, then you get it that, that day, so, uh, that's what happened there. Equipment maintenance, so, so this is, you'll notice, ten thousand less, I'm looking at Department thirty-five-ten, my equipment maintenance. I took ten thousand out of that, and you'll see I put it under ambulance. We're, we're trying to make a whole line item for ambulances, that I can tell you how much from year to year it costs to run specific in ambulance. Otherwise, it's hidden, otherwise, equipment maintenance had, equipment for the ambulances, oxygen resupply, all that was sort of in equipment maintenance, so I'm trying to do one line item for ambulance itself, so it'll tell us maintenance, licensing, upgrades, equipment, at, at least I can come back to you possibly next year, the year before, and tell you, th-this is the exact cost, rather than have it spread out. Uh, so that's why equipment maintenance is down ten. Training, always comes up as a, as a question, let me explain that, w-we do have training under labor, however, this line item of training is very specific, that's where the fire chief gets to send members that are really active to, to class. And the last example is, it cost me five hundred dollars to send a member recently to a two-day, uh, grant writing class, and, and that member's writing a quarter million dollar grant for us right now, for FEMA. So the five hundred up front could get the town and the fire department all brand-new radios at, at a quarter million dollars. So, that's why I control that small training, and I can send him to ICE Rescue. My captain is also now the, the town safety officer, not including the fire department safety officer, and that's another five hundred dollar seminar coming up that I have to pay for, for her to go. So these are very specifics, um, Milk can tell you when there's a ladder training or a quint training that, that costs money, I, I get to choose who goes, a-and that's just sort of a reward, um, for, for activity, really, in the fire station.
The only thing I go for is pizza.
That's true too, Milk.
That's because you got over seventy-five years of training already.
Milk. He doesn't drive like it, but that's okay. So ambulance is up to ten thousand, I, I, again, I took it from equipment maintenance and put it into ambulance, and, and very shortly, we'll, we'll have very specifics of, of exact dollar cost. Diesel, y-you can see it's up, I, I did, the reason we'll try to shave a couple hundred off of that, it's starting to come back down. I did put in a policy, when you, when you talk about the budgets, uh, we didn't go out of town, so, so we would get requests a lot to bring your ladder truck for, for rallies, kids with cancer, fire department activities, I put a blanket policy and talked to the town manager, we're, we're not bringing trucks out of town. We'll certainly do public education in town for, for, for people that ask, because they're still in service, they're in town, but I will not currently, Auburn was one of them recently, send our apparatus, uh, unless it's an emergency, o-out of town. So I'm trying to save on fuel, wear and tear, uh, it's just the right thing to do, uh, in my opinion, yes?
Do we occasionally run our trucks around town? I, I guess what I'm thinking is, I think that they should be run around town every now and then, that way they're not sitting for, they probably don't sit for a whole month at a time, but if things set too long, stuff dries out, and then it costs money.
Every, we have six trucks, including the rescue, e-every day one gets checked, every day we try to put miles on those trucks, short miles, because they do need to be run, these are all diesel trucks, all six of them, they, they, they work better, preventative maintenance when, when they are. Also, what you're alluding to is, is driver training, so there's nothing better than, than taking the ladder or out doing a lap of town. Usually, I'm with them, uh, for driver training. Area familiarization, that, that's a common practice with all fire departments, but we don't, uh, you know, nobody's going to the get and go in the quint. However.
So that was Auburn's quint that was there?
That might have been, if I say Auburn, it might have said Auburn. Thank you, John. Um, dues, a-again, as you can see for the budget, there was nothing in Trio. Dues, a, a thousand dollars of that three thousand, a thousand dollars goes to the Cumberland County Fire Chiefs Training Association, so we can use the burn building, which we did this year. So that's just, uh, thirty-three percent of it is just for membership right there. Then there's National Fire Protection Association, there's professional dues that go with it, uh, Fire Chiefs of Maine, International Association, that type of thing. Chief's expense.
Can I ask a question about that dues?
No, we're gonna move, no.
So, this is, this is just a mistake.
Correct, so I, I appreciate that, that is, you, you know, you asked, Jerry alluded to putting it in Trio. I, I don't have Trio, I don't see Trio, if it's not coded on day one properly, then this paperwork carries throughout the year.
I can see, but, well, when you said there wasn't a line, but I have last year's stuff, and there, there actually is a line, you just meant there wasn't a line loaded.
Correct.
Okay, I got it, thank you.
So I, it, when that happens, um, I eat it somewhere else, I mean, that's why I'm talking about zero sum at the, at the bottom.
Yep.
You, you know, there was money in the budget, it just wasn't loaded into Trio in, under dues.
So last year, just in case anybody cares, that was, number was twenty-seven hundred last year, so this is a little bit of an increase, but it looks like a huge increase.
Correct, and, and it's not, it's just, uh, subscriptions go up year to year. And, and that's what's lost, you, you know, this is my soapbox, that's what's lost, when, when people leave, or they run out, or they don't work out, the, the institutional knowledge, sometimes, or, or mistakes happen. Chief's expense, I, I went over, it's historically what it is. That's almost contractual for me, that I, I had to buy myself gear this year, that's three thousand dollars in, in gear, um, out of that cost. Uh, fire prevention, a, a very important topic, we've been going over every year, so I doubled it. As you know, open house for us, you know, now that we're out of the pandemic, if you will, having people there, open house, that's public education. We were allowed to go into the schools this year for a whole day, uh, Diana does a fantastic job with her group, they, uh, can't say touched, uh, they, um, educated every student at that school this year, was brought up, uh, and it's important that, at their level, the different ages, different messages that we do for fire prevention, public education. And that's a cost, all the booklets are a cost. Personal safety, um, you can see how much we spent, we're budgeted sixteen, we spent twenty-seven, so gear, your structural gear went up. What used to be two thousand is now three thousand, we had to order four sets, that's twelve thousand of that money is just in gear. I did just get a grant yesterday, it hasn't even been, um, put out on social media, we got a five thousand dollar grant for Wildland Forest Fire gear, so that's a cost savings, they're all of us. And that's what we do every month, we, we apply for more. Dispatch, a-as I told you, that went up five percent, um, and that's also licensing, um, FCC license, your I am responding license, your radio license, your Andrews Goggin County, and then there's an IMC through LA comms, the, the Lewis and Auburn comms. Those are fixed costs, you, you, you don't negotiate sort of for radios, that's, it's just what it is doing business. And miscellaneous, a, a lot of that, which you don't see, building and miscellaneous, I had to put in a side door, because the fire station turned twenty years old that addition, the door cost me thirty-five hundred, steel door rusted out over the time, so that was, it, it's a, with a special Unican lock on it, because it's a locked facility, so it needed a replacement. With all that said and done, uh, we were pretty close, uh, we're resting, you know, twenty-two hundred more, or less than one quarter of a percent increase. Uh, I think we can do it, e-even with the increased call volume, it's just, uh, the longer I'm here, efficiency of scale, um, cutting where we can. I don't know if you have any questions, but, yes?
I, it's not a question, I actually want to congratulate you, because.
I'll take it.
Every time I'm able to kind of listen to a select board meeting, it seems like almost every other one, you're like, we got a grant, we got a grant. And I would recommend that you almost write up a report, or at least a summary of the grant that you've gotten, because I don't think the town realizes how much it has done for applying for grants, and I think that that would impress the members that show up at town meetings.
Thank you, I will, I will, thank you for that, Jill, I appreciate it, yes?
So, uh, line twenty-five oh-one, the health insurance?
Yes.
I know you said you don't take the insurance, but, but when Jerry was doing the town admin budget, he said, well, if we had to go out and hire somebody, we'd have to pay them, so we want to make sure that that money's there. Shouldn't you do the same thing here? Shouldn't you do the same thing here to be consistent across the budgets?
Yes.
It's him.
Yes.
He's guaranteeing that he's not leaving.
Right.
And that's another part of it too, you know, so. I don't think he's going anywhere, so I think we're probably safe. But if he does, we're gonna be in trouble, especially the way his budget is now. Because we don't have it in there to give somebody new to come in and give them the insurance. But I'm fairly confident he's okay. I'm gonna, I'm gonna take that risk. This is a guy you don't want to lose.
I appreciate that.
This is a clerk you don't want to lose.
That's a true story.
This is a counter help part-time that you don't want to lose. And I want to talk a little bit more about, because I didn't have my telecom sheet to talk about. But I'll just explain some stuff when we're done. But I do, I just want to draw your attention to the twenty-two budget. I believe at town meeting, the fire department budget did add up to the four ninety-six one fifty-three. So it is correct, but you can see how it got loaded into Trio. And once you load it and you push it, the button, that's what you got. So that's why these numbers are skewed. So when I first came in and I was looking at this budget, I freaked out a little bit. I'm like, what, what, what is this? How can the workman's comp be fifty-three thirty-nine? It's not. His workman's comp, if you do the math, is fifty thousand dollars. That's what the fire department pays. That's what it costs. I mean, they do dangerous work. So it was really how it got loaded into Trio that kind of threw those numbers off. I just point that out to you because I had him in my office. I even had Kevin come in and Kevin goes, well, it's in his label lines. And I'm like, are you sure? And he says, I know it is. I tried, he's been here, so it made me feel a little bit more comfortable. First coming in and looking at this, I'm like, I don't know what this, why this is like this. But we've got it figured out a little bit more at ease and these are the correct, the correct numbers now for those. I will load, when we finally get to the budget, I will be the one to load it into Trio. I think we'll have a little bit better outcome from that.
CMP says electricity is going up a lot.
I know.
Yours is, you didn't have much, how come?
Because I didn't want you folks freaking out. I've heard a lot of stories. I've heard a lot of stories about this. As new guys say, well, you know, I'm like, okay, we'll try to do it. We'll let them be responsible for raising that. I know, I know that's kind of, I know that is, but I didn't, I don't, I don't have a crystal ball. None of us do. So I don't know how much it's gonna go up. We can guess, you can guess.
Give me one sec. To answer your question, yes. It is twelve hundred dollars for a benefit for the fire chief, for any employee that doesn't take health insurance. You'll get that. I fought to actually keep it under half a million. That's a special number. I fought to keep it level funded. For Neil's question for electricity, I literally drive by and shut lights off. I yell at them like I'm a parent now and I yell at the kids. It's exactly what happens. I come in in the morning and the light's on in the bathroom and I'm cursing them. We've gone to.
Motion light bulbs, I have them.
We have gone to motions.
Yeah, I have them.
LEDs, that type of stuff. So every day it's a battle. Every dollar is your money, it's accounted for. I take it seriously. Fires will always put themselves out. We can make a parking lot all day long, that's easy. Although there's four houses in town still standing because of that fire department over there. But to answer your question, I literally just take pride in trying to save that money. And I don't want to guess, you know what I mean? It's tough enough with diesel and electricity and everything else. It's tough. Go ahead, Heather.
So to talk about Jerry saying like, I'll let them be responsible for raising it. I remember last year you were kind of given a pretty hard time about the fact that the equipment maintenance line was so much lower than the actual for multiple years. And I'm noticing that that's the case this year also. And so maybe we could just talk about that.
I think I could convince everybody with the age of some of our trucks that equipment maintenance is starting to add up. What I'm hoping is, if I get the CIP for the ladder, the quint, because it does dovetail to my budget. If I can invest in the quint, because we just invested another three thousand in it, then I won't have to invest next year or the year next for maintenance. So everything, it doesn't mean that happens. You know, CIP or actually the townspeople could just say, I just don't think it's appropriate and that's fine. The big asks for the investments for fire this year are on the capital side, not necessarily on the operating side. So if I were to receive that, I can invest in some of the apparatus and I wouldn't need it for equipment maintenance.
Okay, thank you.
And let me just, it's not that I'm trying to make you folks responsible at all. That's not it. But what goes on the town warrant is the select board budget and your budget. Not my budget. I present it from my side of the glass. That's what I do. I put forth my best effort, especially four months in. Next year I'll be a little bit more comfortable with the budgets and how things are funded and where they are. Especially if the numbers are right and I can track and it's coded correctly and all that stuff. I actually kind of forgot where I was going.
He was making us responsible for the budget.
Well, let's talk about that. So this is my first budget experience here in Durham, but it's not my first budget overall. And I told Milk this on the phone this morning. I've had the pleasure, the opportunity to see towns from Kittery to Borkent to Callis to Bethel and just through the DOT. I know a lot of town managers and a lot of towns in this form of government will go to town meeting on a unified front, select board and committee with the same number. You just, you just, you just, you just balance it out here. And if people are thinking you're not doing your due diligence because you feel you need to at least cut something. I mean, I suppose I could have raised the electricity really high to give you something to cut. But that's, that's not what this is about. We should go to town meeting in a unified front. We are the town, we're adults, we can work it out in here. And if people don't think you're doing that, then you can just have them view the tape. That's where it should happen. It's a lot easier to do it here as a group representing the town and the people and go to town meeting with similar numbers. I've gotten warrants from several towns that show that their select board and the budget committee recommend the same number. I throw that out to you. If it doesn't happen, I'm okay with it. But you're gonna hear it again exactly next year at this time. I'm gonna try to encourage you to do that.
I think part of the issue is the time crunch. You know, they have their one, maybe two meetings and figure out the budget. We have our one, maybe two meetings. And then it's back to them and it's done. Like there's, there's not.
Enough time?
There's nothing in the schedule to allow us to really have that team meeting again to really get into the nuts and bolts and come up with a consensus somewhere.
Right. Well, we could maybe work on that. But I just, I mean, it's, I just don't want us as a group to be like, well, this is your budget, this is our budget. And it's like a competing budget. We're all Durham, we're the town of Durham. And I just think we should go to that, to a town meeting unified together and say, this is, we worked this out. This is, this is what we believe is a good budget for the town.
As long as I get what I want, I agree a hundred percent.
And that ain't gonna happen.
Neil just wants a new door and new Erika.
But just because we come up agreeing here doesn't mean the town is gonna change.
Right. But it just looks like we're doing our job and we're, we're together and we're working it out for the people of Durham. Rather than being, like I said, a. Yes, it's not a competition of who can come up with a better budget. It's all of our budget. It's the people's budget. It's not your budget, it's not the select board's budget. It's the people of Durham, that's their budget.
I think in years past, that has happened some. Sometimes it's a difference of where the money comes from. You know, whether it comes raised or appropriated or sometimes that's what the difference is. I think it tends to be more of that than, I don't, I can't ever remember maybe once or twice where we were that far off.
Right.
You know, but it's, a lot of it is maybe where it comes from.
Last year if you added it all up, the budget committee numbers were higher than the select board numbers.
I had never seen that.
Never seen that.
Well, in all honesty.
Not by much, I mean, what's up?
In all honesty, looking at some of this with some of the comments that were made tonight with electricity, fuel went down, it's going back up. Some of these numbers ain't gonna cut it.
Right.
I don't want to raise any of it. I'm wicked at for trying to keep it down. But I'm realistic though. You know, if CMP is saying your electric bill's gonna go up twenty-five percent and it ain't in here, twenty-five percent's a lot of money.
Yeah.
You know, when you're looking at these type of budgets, so.
We appreciate that. And again, just keep in mind, I'm four months into it, trying to get a feel for everybody and their flavor of, you know, how far you want to go and what you want to do. It should be realistic and we're trying to do that.
I think one of the big things for this town, and you mentioned it earlier when you said you took the one above and the one below and kind of compared. One of the problems with this town is we don't have some of the things that those other towns have for tax base. We have homeowners. We don't have businesses and all that stuff to help offset some of it. So it hurts when the homeowner is sucking it all up. That's the thing, kind of trying to, at least for me, I'm always trying to think of. Especially where a lot of our members, and I guess I'm one now, are up there in age. I'm good-looking still, but I'm still up there.
Mark, I appreciate, you know, what you're saying here. You're absolutely right. There's no business tax base here whatsoever to help with the taxes. I'm gonna, I'm gonna hand you the work that Jessica did on the town so you can see what these towns have. And this is just counter help, okay? Just what they have at the counter. And that's, that's really what I'm looking to it. In this budget too, it's really what you want to provide the service, okay? And sometimes that window gets extremely busy. If you're okay with people lining out the door to come in and, we can provide that kind of service. But that's, that's the, that's the reality of it is that Durham is growing. So even though these towns have bigger tax base, the population that they have is still coming to the window to register their vehicles, to do this, to do that. And it's growing.
I agree.
It's, I, I'm seeing it and I, I'm looking at it and I don't know how they do it. They do great, but.
One of the concerns I think is gonna be when you bring on that full-time, the person is, because this has been talked about numerous times over the years. That town office was really too small when it was built. Where are you gonna put this person?
That's part of the plan of, like Alan was talking about earlier, to do something different with the space that we currently meet in over there and maybe make that some more office space or code enforcement space and have this be where we have our meetings.
Because, of course, I didn't have my telecom thing, so I sort of spaced it. We paid Data Define this year about twenty thousand dollars to do some of our IT stuff, okay? So now, and our part-time help Cindy, she worked for Burgess Computer in Bath for how many years?
Two, right?
Two. Yeah, so where she really helps us, like when we got those new computers and it wasn't printing registrations, we were on the phone with Data Define to get it resolved and it was really a Trio issue. And we waited like five hours. We called Cindy in. Cindy got on the phone with Trio and it was fixed in ten minutes. So she's very, very good at the computer stuff. And it's just, Devin does good too, but he's a student and he's gone. Well, she's right there, so when we have those issues, Cindy's on it and it gets fixed relatively soon. We had issues with computers, the drivers not talking to the printers one time. Who fixed it? Cindy fixed it. We didn't have to wait. So we might save a little bit of money by not having Data Define on the phone. Because they're on a per diem. So you call Data Define, it's fifty bucks when they pick up that phone. If we can fix it in-house, that's a better, better way to go. So there's all kinds of talent over here that we really need to tap in. They do, they do a great job. So there's another reason to take advantage. I'm not taking advantage of you. Taking advantage of the situation and the resources we have and putting them to good use.
Data Define is a renamed BEK, right?
BEK, right.
So you may have heard BEK is who it always was in the past and they changed their name, so.
I mean, it's just awesome. I mean, she helps out in that regard so much. And that's a lot of things that I think people don't necessarily see is we're dealing with computers and all kinds of things. Well, there are gonna be glitches. And when you have those glitches.
Stop it.
It does, it bogs down, it stops. I mean, that day we couldn't print registrations, that was it. That was three or four hours, right? It went down.
I put registration and someone's been locked, so I didn't do anything.
So there's another reason why we, that, why I'm looking at this particular individual and I'd like to get her on and help us.
Heather had her hand up first.
The revenue side of the, where it's, the thing that Jane was saying, fire department, hydrants and insurance, fire department, that's, he said that you were gonna talk about the billing that's like substantially increased. Can you just explain that part?
Sure.
Please?
I've been informing the select board, and again, these things take time, about our ambulance rates and they're woefully under average. We have a third-party billing com star that does our billing. So I have a proposal on the table for the select board. They've tasked me with getting them more information, which I have for them. Of course, we're in budget season. I'm looking at it right now, Heather, with our ambulance billing is collecting eighty-five percent of what we're billing. So that's currently seventy-four thousand. Now that's June of twenty-one to July of twenty-two because there's a six-month lag of insurance and getting it all back and encumbering it. But we're at seventy-four thousand. So they build out eighty-six from the ambulances because the rescue is that much busier, more transports, more billing, that type of stuff. They're recuperating eighty-five percent of it, so seventy-four thousand. So I don't know if those numbers are jiving with you. Again, that goes to general fund for the ambulances. But that's at low billing rates. So when you're talking about revenues, I will be getting with the select board to talk about increases.
And it seems like, based on what he's shown us so far, it seems like there's significant room to increase some of those fees. But a lot of the questions we asked were just a little bit more benchmarking to make sure that the fees we're charging are appropriate. And also to make sure we're recovering our cost. I suspect that's one of the motivations for the chief, you know, breaking out and trying to allocate ambulance-specific costs to the ambulance like he was talking about earlier. So that we can know what is it costing us to run the ambulance service and provide that and make sure that the fees we're charging are doing as much as we can to recoup that cost. And adding to that, that when this has come up in the past, the point comes up like, well, jeez, are you gonna charge residents a fee? You know, if they get into it because they're already paying taxes on it? And that's, if, if the answer to that is yes, we can't logistically or legally not charge residents and charge other people. So that's why we want to make sure that the fee is not exorbitantly more than what the actual cost is, so.
So I'd like to actually talk about that, about a different position in the town, about charging residents for something that tax dollars are funding, but we can talk about that later.
It's not trash tags, is it?
No, God. Okay, so I, remind me what you said, but when you first started about nine-one-one calls were up. I think you said three point five percent. And then you said another number after that?
Sure.
Yeah, responses.
Responses are seven points.
Seven and a half percent.
Okay, so in twenty-twenty-one, that revenue was forty-four thousand whatever. And you're saying that this one is seventy-four thousand? And so how did the three and a half percent or whatever the response is?
Sure.
That equated to an additional thirty thousand without raising funds? I mean, fees?
What, so you, it's, it's not apples, what happened in that timeframe is, w- we switched billing companies.
Yeah, and they got more money.
So, yes.
Okay.
I think we were going with Freeport on a side hustle, Freeport Fire was providing billing also.
Yeah.
So, when we, yeah, when we went to a professional company, their collection rate is better.
I see.
Right.
Okay.
And then the, the data that we provide them, i- it's all.
I remember that conversation.
Okay.
Small, you know, a little bit taking place now about the billing company and so.
Yep. Yep.
Um, so then my last question around this is that I don't see an expense anywhere in any of this for that billing service, where's that hiding?
It, it's actually, they take it off the top.
Okay.
Uh, and that's, that's contractual, so, um, private contractual sort of negotiations, I have that on my desk, I think the select board are aware of it, cause they have to sign off on it.
Okay.
But they have a collection rate and a collection fee, so the more they collect, the more they make type of thing.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, but they have it broken down, just so you know, and I, I can, with their permission, give you this, it's sort of open knowledge, Blue Cross, Medicaid, Medicare, Medicaid, as you know, Medicare, they only give you so much. You can charge a thousand, but they give you three hundred, a- and that's it, and, and the, the person, uh, does not make up the difference, they, they don't have to, so there's things like that, there's Veterans VA, there's self-pay insured and uninsured.
Mm-hmm.
So this is very much, so, all these people are, are, uh, learning as I am.
These are transport costs?
Yeah, these are transport fees, so if we go to a car wreck, I'll, I'll give you easy examples, a- and, and nobody's injured or, or you refuse to go, there's no cost, we'll, we'll take a refusal, we'll do document, if you fall at your house, we'll go and evaluate you, if you don't go, there's no cost to you, there, there's no fee. If we transport you to one of the five hospitals we go to, then there's a transport cost, there's mileage, there's EMT versus paramedicine, and then there's, um, cost of, of first aid, if we give you oxygen, if we give you an EKG, all those are, are costs associated, a- and then you'd get the bill.
But it's, it can go through insurance.
Yes, well, not everyone, so some people are uninsured, some people have automobile insurance, some have Blue Cross Private, some have Medicare, Medicaid, but yes, you go through insurance, we take all that information, um, but on, on the Medicare, Medicaid, they only allow federally, they only allow certain costs, so we can't recoup the difference.
And I think it's important to differentiate that, cause when we talk about residents paying, what is the percentage of residents who are actually paying?
I, I, I don't have.
I know that right now, but I'm not asking that right now, but.
Eighty-five percent.
No, no, eighty-five percent is the.
Cause we're getting eighty-five percent of what we're billing out.
Yes, but I mean, there are a lot of residents who are, it's, where they're not paying anything, because Medicare covers it, insurance covers, that's my point, is not every resident is paying for this, there are other payment sources, and what we learned the other day is United Ambulance is not coming to Durham anymore. So they're telling all transports, like my family member, emergency or not, call, nine, call the chief and, and that's the only way to get there, so I suspect that will increase your, you know that, chief, but I mean, it's already picked up.
Can I ask a question?
Sure, this is important stuff, a- ask a question.
So, I'm just naive on the whole transport thing, I think of someone being transported as more in an emergency situation, it's not because, hey, I'm an old elder person and I don't, um, have a car ride to my doctor's appointment, do we actually transport for things like that?
It, it's a great question, that, no, so we don't provide rides to like doctors or whatnot, however, every ambulance service, regardless if it's fire-based, community or private, does get beaten up with people that'll say, I'm injured, I wanna go to main med, a- a- and then they'll high tail it off of there, yeah, that, that happens.
All right.
Or, um, a- again, probably a discussion for another time, but we, we do absorb a lot of costs, so, um, uninsured, whether that's younger or, or some other circumstance, whether that's in a motor vehicle accident or an overdose, w- w- we eat that cost. Does, does any of that include, or do we even do wellness calls and have to transport? We do wellness checks, a, a lot of that's, uh, nurses that come in or doctors that call, or their, their lab work is, is out of whack, we will respond to their residents and check them out, a- and then if they need to be transported, but we don't do transfers, so that's a different topic, some of these ambulance services, and it's not in tonight, do transfers, so that's, once you go to the hospital and you either have to come home, that's a transfer, or if you're going, um, to a doctor's, you're, you're non-ambulatory and you have a doctor's appointment, we don't do transfers. Uh, we don't do inter-facility transfers, so hospital to hospital, uh, I'm at Midcoast, but I have to, I have a cath lab, I need to go down to main, uh, med, we don't do that currently. A lot of fire department-based don't, Lisbon EMS is trying for, for extra cash, but I don't wanna take our only nine-one-one ambulances and our only EMTs out of town for that and have somebody have a heart attack o- o- on my watch. That's, that's not what the service is based on.
So would moving someone from like home to a nursing home, is that considered a transfer?
Correct, yep, that's, that's more of a private ambulance transfer, be- because they can set it up, that's almost an appointment, they can figure out when, what level they need to be at, that type of stuff, a- and again, the reality of it is, sometimes we'll get a call like, uh, to Midcoast, hey, it's a Durham resident, you know, can you take him back, well, that sounds great, but the reality is, they're not ready, it takes them an hour to two to do the paperwork, you don't know the specialty they need, how many people it takes to get them in their house, and that ambulance is out of service for three, four hours, and we're just busy enough that, a- a- I can't risk that, that type of stuff. A- a- and another note, this, trying not to happen, I, I had to convince a, a resident to go to the hospital recently, and they didn't have a ride home, so the fire chief came from home and picked her butt up and filled her prescriptions and got her home, so there's a lot of things that happen behind the scenes in a small town, uh, to, to help out the citizens, so I, I, I don't wanna advertise that, but.
You just did.
Yes, they, they just did. Dust a fire chief's truck, but he's tired of it.
Chief, when you say we get eighty-five percent of what we bill, is that what the insurance will pay, or what?
No, that's what the collection rate is currently, fo- for a private billing company, that's what their, their collection rate is, eighty-five percent of what's billed.
I'd say the Medicare, Medicare.
And, and we bill everything that we should?
Pretty low.
Yes, cause there's oversight on that, so it, it's really just checkboxes.
But we're not billing our costs, we're not billing our true costs?
I think we are.
Depending on how you measure it, I suppose.
I- if I gave you the numbers, i- they're all relative, but you, you know, if I put a EMT back there, that's a thousand dollar bill, just, just for a basic. So we are doing our costs for that one call, cost recoup, but if it's a Medicare, Medicaid patient, we're only getting three hundred.
So why don't we bill, I, I know this was maybe asked, why aren't we billing the, the user?
Because you, you, i- it's against the law, on Medicare, Medicaid, th- that's a federally, uh, set rate, uh, they've already paid upfront for, for fifty years, so.
We can't send the user, we get.
No, no, you can't, they, they don't make up the cost.
So I just went through this with a family relative, and we got a bill from, uh, Lisbon.
Yes, for a transfer or nine-one-one?
Nine-one-one.
Okay. You'll definitely get a bill.
We paid it.
Lisbon, thanks you.
This, this was just within the last three months.
I, I can't speak for the specifics of that, I can certainly talk offline of that, Medicare, Medicaid allows so much, we can bill fifteen hundred dollars for that call, but Medicare, I have the rates, literally, it's like three hundred and thirty dollars, some of you may know, that's all they allow and you don't have to make up the difference. I, I double-checked with our private billing, just to make sure. Cause that was a question from, from the select board is, is if we started overcharging, O- Auburn's the same, you, you know, it, it doesn't matter what fire department-based EMS it is, we all charge, but we only get a certain percentage back.
One, and one of the things that prompted a lot of our follow-up questions for the chief was some of the data he showed us of like, I think it was the average of the top fifty clients of the, in New England of the billing, like some of them had rates that were like five, six times the Medicare rate, and we're like, where, where is that coming from, so we're just, that's, that's some of the follow-up work to understand that better.
Just know, and I can help you offline, Neil, just know that w- we are working on increased revenue through ambulance rates, uh, that's just a process.
Thank you.
A- a- any other questions for the fire department? Honestly, for, I was trying to keep it under half a million and, and not raise it, that's a, that's a big nut to, for, for the whole town, um, and, and whatever we need to do, level fund it, a- and I think we've been doing that for about four years now.
I had one question that is not related to the budget.
Okay.
Someone, uh, it's about fire department, someone asked, I know that the fire department is a cooling center in the summertime, are we, is it also a warming center?
Okay. Yep. So I, I, I know Lois, and this is a discussion with the select board and the town manager, I'm, I'm trying to make it a warming center, however, when you're talking EMA, County Emergency Management, the last storm Lisbon hadn't established warming center, so not every storm does the fire department turn into a warming center, there are regional warming centers, and I need to do a better job at communicating.
I was just gonna say, I think it's in the, and I know that you're busy when those things are happening, but I do think that that, like, public information announcement would be helpful during those times.
And you're right, and we've been working through that w- with IT, uh, about personal phone numbers, calling at midnight and getting that information out, but that was on me and I, I dropped a ball recently.
Didn't we have something set up, and I just recall when Deb Larabee was the EM, was she an EMS person, what's the name of the person, she always did. EMA, okay. She got like cots and she had us all set up for that, whatever happened with all that stuff?
Um, that's all been moved to the fire station, a- and again, it's, it's a talk with the town manager, which we actually have a meeting set up already for that. I, I know one question arose, especially about the Eureka Center, you cannot just open a town facility like this building and have at it. It's not a potluck, it has to be supervised, my job as a fire chief, putting out fires is easy, but the liability to protect the town for things like this is, is having a volunteer here, having cots, segregation of child, you know, uh, men and women, there's only one bathroom here, y- you know, who cleans up the kitchen, but I can control that at the fire station.
Okay.
But yes, a lot of people have done a lot of work prior, and that's all in, in play, we, we just need to communicate better.
Thank you.
Oh, you're welcome.
I just have one last comment, um, I just wanna talk about expectations. All you folks in, in Durham here pay taxes, right? From a town manager's standpoint, I'll just tell you what my expectation is, my expe-
They are dancers, right?
Right. My, my expectation is, when you walk into that town office, the expectation is, is that you're gonna get timely service, friendly service, and that's why I believe we need that extra body in there to be able to do that. I, there's been countless times where there have been people lined out the door to get that service, and if we had that extra body, we could do that. I mean, there is only two windows, uh, but, you know, if someone's off for lunch and there's only one window open.
Wasn't that, I was thinking back when we did that, that counter was set up, so that center window, and I think it was, uh, Portland Glass or something that made that up, so that could have been changed to a third spot, but I might be wrong, but I live in discussion.
We only had two counter computers that are set up to do the transactions and things like that.
Yeah, okay, well, that would be, yeah, okay.
But that's my expectations for the, the citizens of Durham is to get, to, to provide, to be able to provide that service. And, and that, and that service is up to you folks, I, I just, I just manage the service you want, but that's my expectation of my staff and everything.
Okay?
Yep.
All right, well, I think that concludes our budget workshop for tonight, uh, we will reconvene, um, on Thursday at six PM back here, um.
Six PM.
Yep, six o'clock, not six-thirty, six o'clock, um, thank you very much, um.
I just wanna hand out to them. This is the, this is the work that, uh, Jessica did on employees in other towns, just keep in mind that it's just the counter help that's on here, not the, the clerk or the treasurer at all, it's who they have for counter help.
In, in the notes, um, it says town clerk in office will come out if needed, so the counter coverage is, um, two deputy clerks, but if like some of them have four, then that is the clerk that's included in it.
Just to kinda help you guys ask questions and deliberate or whatever you.
All right, so for select board members, uh, I think we're gonna, um, we're gonna bypass executive session, we don't really need that tonight, uh, so I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Joe, we have a motion from Joe to adjourn, is there a second?
I think pretty good.
Second from Josh, all in favor? Four, zero, we are adjourned.